It happens every time. All right. Are we ready? All right. This meeting of the this meeting of the Livingston City Commission is called to order. May we have roll call, please? Yes?
Present. Here.
Present.
Here. We will now have a moment of silence. Thank you. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I can do that.
All right.
Sit down. Stop. All right. First on our agenda tonight, we have public comment. Individuals are reminded that public comments should be limited to items over which the city commission has supervision, control jurisdiction, or advisory power. Please come up, state your name and address, and sign in at the end or beginning.
Good evening, Commission Chair and Commissioners. I, since we created the CBB, we still had the Chair Bennett was up here, and I believe Quentin, you were here. And Mel, you were up here, and I got to come up every year and give the final numbers. And kind of also, I dispersed always the CBB plans every year, like I still do, before we actually submit to them to the state. I email the commission and community members and the boards just to make sure that everybody is okay after the committee creates the CBB plans, the marketing plans for each year for the city of Livingston. And so tonight, there was a little mix-up. I still wanted to get up here and give you just, there's, these documents actually came from the Department of Commerce. We were just, we just passed our audit. If I can hand these to you quickly.
Leslie, we know your name, but I don't think you stated it. Thank you.
Leslie Feigl, Livingston Chamber, Commerce, CBB, and TBID Director. So what I've handed you tonight is the, the last four years of passing the audit, just in case, because I know as Melissa and Warren, you were new. You might not have had the previous copies, but I have passed the audit every year. We just passed the audit at the TAC meeting just last week. And also, I wanted to bring up incredibly quickly that last year FY19, we closed with $29,000 in different marketing segments and marketing methods that were extremely successful. Again, every year for the last four years, Livingston has been up for awards. We actually are up for another award at the Governor's Conference this year. So we are, what we're doing is extremely successful, and I'm going to continue on that path. I did want to just simply say that, if I can switch gears here, not only have we been successful, but in 2017, with the marketing plan that we wrote, that we won Community of the Year for the state of Montana. We've won the Film Community of the Year. We have also won in 2005, we won Community of the Year. We're very successful at what we do is because we reach into the community, and we reach into the businesses to understand everybody's point of view on the way that they feel the marketing they see fit. And then we kind of compile it all together, and then we also follow the rules and regulations and the brand pillars of the state of Montana. I do want to bring up one other thing that should be the last document there. I've also submitted to you ordinances and resolutions the, for the city of Livingston. And Montana Annotated Code Title VII Local Government Part One, Resolution Requirements Shall Be Submitted In The Form Prescribed By The Resolution Of The Governing Body. That is the commission. That is you. And I appreciate all that you do and that you did in the very beginning of creating the CBB for us. We have not failed in any way. We have not sat down and had to discuss any type of discrepancies. We have not been called up in front of you as the governing commission to be able to put out anything forbid, to take away, to discontinue from the CBB that we currently have under the Chamber of Commerce. And I am hoping that we will, I personally have been taken a huge beating in public, and I would like an apology because I am really tired of hearing, well, we want to let someone else have a chance. That is not a discrimin, that is not a that's not an appropriate response. So I appreciate your time, very little time tonight. I was supposed to be on an agenda item, but I will be back up in front of you, I guess, in the next couple of weeks to discuss this further. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Leslie. Any other public comment?
Patricia Grabo, 204 East Calendar Street. I was looking at the document that you passed at the last meeting. Resolution numbers listed as number one, Resolution 4892. There's some discrepancies that I would appreciate if you would take a look at it, and then we could later discuss possibly at a meeting with the chamber or at a, at a, the next city commission meeting. Or, but I'd like to bring it to my governing body, which is, of course, the city commission. Under 4892, it references Resolution 4829 as that created the T-Bid. And if you look at 4829, which is number two, it is, it's the original document that lists Vision Livingston as the creator of this document, it's not signed on the back. So that's an incorrect reference in this resolution you passed last time. In addition, it references, it, it has a second paragraph in it which shows up. If you will look at 4831, that is actually the resolution that you passed on November 20th, 2019, that actually created the T-Bid. And it was passed by the city commission and signed, as you will see on the back, by, by the city commission. Okay, so 4831, and if you will take the time, not tonight, but take the time to look at 4831, you will see that in no way does it, on the one you passed last week, at no point does it say that it is a desire of the T-Bid as approved by Livingston City Commission in order to promote health, safety, prosperity, security, and general welfare of the potential members of the district and citizens of Livingston to levy assessments against certain tracts of land within the exterior limits of the city of Livingston that comprise the T-Bid. In fact, if you will look at the resolution you actually passed, 4831, where, the first three, whereas it only relates to tourism. So those, that paragraph added, added information and verbiage to the resolution that simply wasn't there. So if you wouldn't mind taking the time sometime this week to look at it, and perhaps we could visit even on the phone, I would, I would greatly appreciate it because there's some discrepancy that we won't have time tonight to look at. And I want to say also, there has been some concern. We've requested a meeting of the Chamber of Commerce with the city commission and the city manager, and so appreciate the opportunity to talk to each other. So I've been in Livingston 20 years. And I'm, one thing I've known about people in Livingston is we've become friends over time, even though at times we've disagreed. And the reason we stayed friends over the years is that we just took the time. It's a neighborhood, it's a small town to talk to each other. So I'm grateful for that opportunity that we will have hopefully soon. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Moving on to consent items. Tonight we have five consent items. Do I have a motion from the commission on consent items A through B? Or one that you'd like to pull or more that you'd like to pull for discussion?
I would like to pull Consent Item E. Otherwise, I'll make a motion to approve items A, B, C, and D.
Second.
We have a motion by short and second by maybe. Roll call. Chair of the link? Yes?
Four.
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 Four. We have consent item E open for discussion. Do you want to start with your question or comment?
Yeah, since I pulled, I guess I'll start. That was, obviously, nobody here from the planning board besides commission member, but I'm just wondering, we had a lot of great applicants for the, the one position we had open on the planning board. I'm just curious what criteria was used to select the applicants and take it from there.
I have any feedback from the commission on the consent item? Do you have any feedback on process to clarify from the commission there or?
Sure. So from the process perspective, this is something that we outlined in our board policy guide, is that the boards do the interviews. So there was an interview process for all the applicants. You can see the applications as described. Those were the the initial applications and questions that were asked. I do not know how the planning board exactly did their interviews, just that once completed, then they then sent us the memo you can see on page 29 from the board chair outlining their pick and who was there and who voted.
Page 29?
Yeah, of the agenda.
Oh, there it is.
Yeah, I can offer, since I was there. So you want to know what criteria they were considering?
Yeah, I just, yeah, because I
And I abstained from voting on this.
It's a shame there are so many qualified people.
So I think, I think what it comes down to was the folks on the planning board were thinking about what skill sets already existed among members of the planning board and what was absent, or what they felt was absent. I mean, that's like the most simplistic view. And so I think we had like an architect with experience in mixed-use zoning. We had a community member that was a former reporter, so covered topics like this throughout his career in different parts of Montana. And then there's a longtime resident whose husband was a former city attorney. And then the fourth was more, I think, of health perspective, like she's involved with things like Live Well 49, so mental health and like broad health concerns. So it, I think some of it just came down to opinion, Quentin, on what people thought they needed at the board level. I chose not to vote since I knew we'd be talking about it. I mean, here, and I know Darrell's really looking for the board feedback at that, at that stage of the process, not commission feedback at that stage. I did say, though, that I think as a, from a commission perspective, like I'm thinking about topics a little bit differently than I think about, than I think most board members are thinking, because we tend to think more broadly about all the issues we hear about, not just the board that we serve on, but all of the aspects of the community that we're trying to work on, even across or outside of boards. So does that answer your question? You feel like? Or do you need more from me?
Yeah, I, yeah, that yeah, that takes care of that for me.
So we can table for further research or discussion on this item if you want, and then put it back on the next agenda for consideration, and that is our right. It, it, the one main point that I see in what you're seeing is that sometimes there, it's not even about the details of each person, but it's such an important place right now for us to have the right candidate. And then we do, so there are respect, and that's what we had planned with the board policy or procedures manual, is what it will look like for boards to make decisions. So they did make a decision, but we can also take time to consider that decision if needed.
Yeah, I've just, I've just, I mean, I wonder if we're thinking, you know, that the board thought broadly enough. I mean, you know, the overall, the big picture, I just, far as planning, you know, not narrowly, but from a broad perspective, or like I said, we have several great candidates here and I just want to make sure that enough thought went into selecting.
Can I add one thing?
Sure.
One of the, one of the candidates lives outside of the city limits, like just outside of city limits, so she actually doesn't qualify. Yeah, I think she's like right adjacent to the city. So she would qualify for some other opportunities, but not this one. Yeah, and that's just state statute, so that's not, that's not a local decision, that's a Montana decision.
So my understanding is that the selected candidate filled in some kind of skill set that is already not on the board?
I think this skill set was having lived in Livingston since the 70s. Like being a long-term resident that had it, it sounded like that was of value to some planning board members, somebody who's been in Livingston throughout the years.
Yeah, so that was
Or different.
Kind of the
That was the thing apparently that stood out.
On that was longevity of
Yeah.
Residency here.
Yeah.
She's a property manager, as far as another viewpoint.
Yeah.
And can I add then? So numbers, so how many people were voting that night?
Um, let's see.
What's the number on the planning board again? I feel like a
It should be seven.
Seven, and then we were down.
Frank was not there, I abstained, and then Adam's seat is
Open.
Open.
So there was four people.
That's right. So Kate, Scott, Brian, and Shannon.
And Brian, or Shannon's a voting member too?
That's right.
Yeah, I forgot about that too. So three citizens and one staff. All right. So like I said, if you want to look into and consider it more and ask questions, we have that right. I don't think it, this would be the first time that's been done. Hasn't been done for a while, but on the other hand, I have witnessed it as a commissioner to hold back on a recommendation. Doesn't mean it's not going to happen necessarily. It just means there's more time needed for consideration, so.
Yeah, that's, that was, that was my only thing. I just wanted, you know, just don't want to miss an opportunity here, and that's the only reason I brought it up to be able to discuss it a little bit, so.
And there's another commission meeting before the next planning board meeting? Anyway? So if you all want more time, the next planning board meeting isn't until the end of March, so it's like the third Wednesday.
You know, I don't want to seem to be undermining board either. You know, I mean, you know.
But I don't think it is.
We put a lot of trust in, you know, in them and stuff.
I will say, I don't think it was a particularly easy decision for the board. I think that they they felt everyone had, you know.
Qualifications.
Yeah, like you need important values to bring.
How about on the in the decision-making, did they do an interview process? Tell us what the process, it can look a little different per group.
Yeah.
But
So Chair Weisbeck opened it up for 10 minutes for each candidate, where they had time to speak openly and then answer questions from board members, and board member questions varied for each candidate. So I just took notes, and I think it's all recorded if you wanted to hear what people said, or their phone numbers are listed on their applications. If, sometimes commissioners call people to follow up. So it was different for each person, because each person was different.
I guess my next question is, when's the next opening on the planning board? It'll be two years out?
I think it's the end of every year, because they're rotating seats.
Seven, I believe it is, every year, there's at least one seat up.
I think they're staggered.
I just don't, yeah. You know, if it stands, as close as stays, I just don't want it.
The county person gets reappointed every year, the commissioner gets reappointed, the staff person that we select can probably be whenever we wanted to change it. I think his is, doesn't have a date, Shannon's, but everybody else is staggered, I think, into two-year seat.
I mean, why I would support just a delay, but I could go either way on this one, is that sort of like the House of Lords, you know, this is a big like, who gets that is, you know, although they're born into it, but that's another thing. The, the fact that we're at such a cusp of change, that I think it's a very important position. I, I don't disagree with this person in general, but I think if you feel there's time, so I think it, it's not about the candidate, it's a, it's about just, in my opinion, about making sure that we're moving forward in a really productive way, because there's a lot to do. So I don't know. But you brought it, so you have to make a decision.
I'll make a motion to table it until the next meeting. Table, action item E. If that's okay, well.
Do we have a second? Any second? Well, second it for consideration, for time. All right, oh. Roll call, please. Yes?
Four. Four. Four.
Four. Motion passes. All right, moving on. We have no proclamations tonight, no scheduled public comments. We have one public hearing. Thank you.
I can barely hear you.
We have ordinance number 2085, an ordinance of the city commission of the city of Livingston, Montana, requiring all buildings to comply with the building codes, and amending ordinance number 2053 as codified in Chapter 6 of the Livingston Municipal Code by adopting, by reference, the 2018 International Building Code, IBC, and the 2018 International Residential Code, IRC, and the 2018 International Swimming Pool and Spa Code, the ISPSC, and the 2018 International Existing Building Code, the IBEC. Mr. Carter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we did the the resolution of intent last meeting, so this is the public hearing. Tonight would be the final reading of this ordinance. If passed, it will go into effect 30 days after the, after tonight's meeting, and we will begin to use the new codes. Again, this is just to update our codes based on the state's acceptance of these codes. We can now accept them, so we're just moving forward to make sure that we are maintaining the appropriate standards as we go forward in both inspections and construction.
All right, thank you. Do we have any public comment on ordinance number 2085?
Patricia Grabo, 204 East Calendar Street. I have a question. Does this, this doesn't get rid, rid of grandfathering of historic buildings, does it? No.
Michael, no. So this is Patricia, and I'm not taking your time.
Construction only.
Yeah, this is, we're accepting the required, and I might say something wrong, so correct me, required what the state has voted on and what they work towards for codes throughout the state, then we accept those codes into our codes. So we're really just doing what the state makes us do, in a sense, but, and we have to follow their lead.
Okay. I just want to say something that is so remarkable about Livingston. I don't know if you know that there are over 400 buildings in Livingston on the National Historic Register. We have more buildings in Livingston, Montana, on the National Historic Register than New York, Philadelphia, and Boston combined. So in our historic district is 13 hotels that were built to accommodate 36,000 tourists a season on six trains a day, including the Grabo, of course, that my grandfather built in 1908. So I just, I just wanted to just celebrate the nature of Livingston, Montana in that way, and thank you for the explanation.
Thank you, Patricia. Any other public comment on ordinance number 2085? Public hearing. Oh, I forgot to open the hearing. This public hearing is open? Patricia, we're adding your comments to the public hearing. Any other public comment? This public hearing is now closed. Commissioners, questions or comments?
Just want to bring up again that the state's on a different schedule for energy, the Energy Conservation Code. So we should be, we, the staff, should be on the lookout, which I think they already are for springtime or summertime when that gets updated. Thank you, because I think they're already on it, so thank you.
Any other commissioner comments? Do we have a motion from the commission on ordinance number 2085?
I make a motion, we pass ordinance number 2085.
Second. We have a motion by Friedman and a second by Newt's, row call please. Yes?
Four. Four. Four.
Four. Motion passes. Tonight we have no ordinances, no resolutions, we have three action items. We have action, or, three action items for, action item A, discuss quarterly fund summary report from City Finance Director Paige Fedoroff. Mr. Cardews.
Thank you, Madam Chair, so this is, uh, I think we discussed a few meetings ago that we were going to be starting to give you quarterly reports on the budget and where we stand. Uh, this is the first one of those, so this is for, uh, the first two quarters, so this is the semi-annual one, or halfway through the budget year. So the numbers you're looking for as we go, as you went through it, with things should be around 50%. Not everything's going to be around 50%, there's different schedules depending on debt service, uh, when taxes come in, those kind of items. Uh, but in general, we're pretty much on track in all of our funds for this year's budget. Uh, general fund is probably always the most tenuous. You can see that tax revenues are a little short of what we projected, they're at 46% after the first tax, um, tranche has come in, so we're all below that, uh, total revenue you can see is at 41%, so that's still a little bit beyond, or a little bit behind as far as revenue goes, but expenditures as well are down at 42%, so we're within a percent of what we brought in, what we spent out, so. Uh, things are looking pretty good there, you can see that, um, under expenditures by function, uh, where we're running high, uh, would be in culture and recreation as well as debt service. So the debt service number is actually a good thing, because debt service is on a schedule, it's not going to change, it's not like we're going to run over budget on debt service. It just means that we've paid more of the debt in the, the first part of the year than we will in the second part of the year. So the general fund numbers are right on track. Uh, most of the numbers are actually pretty close across the board, there are a few outliers, if you go through the report, and I won't dig into them, because some of them are pretty far down in the, uh, weeds. One that might have stuck out to you is dispatch on page 58, you see that we're at 23% for, uh, revenue right now in charges for service. That just is, uh, payments from the county that haven't come in yet, so that's not anything concerning, it's just the schedule that the county pays us on. Other than that, you can see taxes for the URA, for the, the tax increment financing is actually a little above what we expected at this point, so that's good news. Uh, impact fees are exceeding the budget, so that's good, we're about 134% of what we expected to come in for impact fees, that just means there's more development than we projected or budgeted for, actually. And other than that, I don't think there was really anything outstanding or significant in the, in the quarterly report at this time. But all those numbers are available for you, if you'd like to, to dig through them, and then send any questions you have, or come in and sit down, we'd certainly talk about them. But in general, there's nothing surprising or alarming so far in the budget this year.
Thank you very much. Any public comment on action item A? Or questions? Alright, commissioners, any questions on the quarterly fund summary?
I'll just make a general comment, um. It's clear and concise and easily to, at least for me, um, to understand, I, I like it, and it's, great job. Thank you.
Yeah. I have to also say, I appreciate just the quick synopsis of where we're at, at the quarters, and I, um, I think it helps us to sort of stay focused on our budget, because it doesn't feel so once a year. So I appreciate it. Any other comments? Alright. Do we have a motion, or we don't have to make a motion, this is a- Alright, moving on to action item B, discuss approve deny Livingston Business Improvement District's updated bylaws. Mr. Cardews.
Thank you, Madam Chair, so this is the next in the line of, um, I will call them pseudo-city, uh, organizations that we've been reviewing. We started with revolving loan fund, we've gone through the Tourism Business Improvement District. Uh, this was the Livingston Business Improvement District. Uh, in reviewing the bylaws, we went back to the enabling legislation where it was actually started, there was some uh, missing information that was in the original legislation that didn't make it into the bylaws. So, we sat down through that, uh, updated them to make sure that it was in compliance with the original intent, and the BID took that back, voted on it as a board, and these are the new bylaws that they're submitting to you for approval. I think one of the most significant changes was, uh, in the original, um, resolution that created the BID, there was a requirement for, uh, annual budgets to come before the, the commission. That did not make it into the bylaws, so we added that in, that was one of the biggest changes. As well as, uh, there was a requirement for two signatures on every check that they were, they were doing, but it didn't actually make it into the bylaws, so we updated that to make sure it was in the bylaws as well. So those were the biggest, the biggest changes, nothing too significant beyond that, we did reformat it a little bit, so it was easier to read and in compliance with our other bylaws.
Thank you very much, um, question before I open it. So often, we have, you know, like the slash-out changes. Do we have the original?
Uh, we do have the original, the original wasn't in a Word format, so this is all retyped from scratch.
Oh, okay.
Uh, so we didn't have a strike-through version of this one.
And we had the original when we approved it. That was what we approved originally.
Yeah, and that was, I forget the year, but it was quite a while ago, so there wasn't a, there wasn't a current electronic version to change. So it had to be recreated.
Okay. So you're saying the biggest changes are that it's updated in the signature realm?
If we're, for checks, yep.
For checks, and the, what was the second one again?
And the second one was to bring things in front of the, um, the commission.
The budget.
The budget in front of the commission.
Yep. So that's on page 78, right there in section one.
Alright. Any questions, just off of anything before I open it? We can open the it for public comment. Please come up and state public, your public comment.
Patricia Grabo, 204 East Calendar Street. I, uh, I can't even tell you how chagrined I am at this presentation tonight. Uh, if you will look at the bylaws, it says at the back, "The Board of Trustees shall provide notice of any meeting of trustees at which an amendment will be provided. The notice must state that the purpose, or that one of the purposes of the meeting is to consider a proposed amendment to the bylaws and contain or be accompanied by a copy or summary of the amendment, or state the general nature of the amendment." That did not happen. I need for this commission, please, to understand, this is taxes. One of the most basic things in, in the constitution is, if you are taxed for something, you should get notice of that taxation, or any significant changes in that taxation. You look at my tax bill, it says BID. I have standing in this, because I have paid into this BID, and so has Warren since day one. Okay, so this, the, they did not even comply with their own bylaws. I went online, on the City Commission, I went online at the BID, I looked at their Facebook, at no place is there any kind of copy of these bylaws. I'm only asking the City Commission to table these bylaws until we can make them compliant with their own bylaws, number one. Number two, there's such a major change in these bylaws, it isn't just, by the way, the budget. Joe Maybes was the, uh, chairman of the city, of the BID when, and I attended the meetings when they asked not to have the budget have to be approved by the City Commission. And that was something that was very important to the BID. So I'm, I'm chagrined that that came into this, and I think, before you look at it, you ought to look at the history of that. And, there is no place for us, it's downtown building owners who pay this tax to get a copy of the original bylaws, so we, and there's nothing here that shows us where the changes are and where they are not, but I have a pretty strong memory. And there's two places where major changes have been made. One, number, number seven, section powers. It says, "Provide for management and administration of the affairs of the district," that was not in the original bylaws. And the most important one is number eight, where it says, "Promote business activity and tourism by advertising blah, blah, blah," to the end. "In the district and surrounding areas," the words "and surrounding areas" was never in the original bylaw, BID bylaws. And it's terribly important, because 131 of us who own businesses downtown pay a tax. And we, and when we signed, 60% of us signed to create a BID, which I was part of and worked hard for, when we, when we signed to pay this tax, it was going to be by the downtown building owners, 60%, and only when in that district, and if you go on the city's website, if you go on the BID website, and everywhere, it is limited just to that area, and no place else, it does not include surrounding areas. So it's unfair for 131 of us to pay taxes on something that would affect the surrounding area, that is absolutely dis, it is, it does not agree with any kind of the intention of the bylaws of the, of BID. And I, I beg you to please table this until these things can-
Thank you, Patricia.
That we can be given sufficient notice, we've been given nothing. Not one thing.
Any other public comment? Alright, commissioners. Would anyone like to start? Warren?
Uh, I was present at the, uh, the startup of the BID also. And it most definitely, uh, the tax, the taxes are, I believe, by square foot on a building, and, uh, the, uh, expenditure of that money, uh, and I remember very specifically, was meant specifically for the, uh, the BID zone. Totally for the BID zone. I can confirm that.
So, I just want to understand then, so are you saying it's not showing where you want it? What is it?
Well, uh, what was just mentioned, uh, in the, uh, the number eight, at the very end of it, tourism in, in the district, promoting business activities in the district and surrounding areas, there was no mention of "and surrounding areas." It was strictly within the, uh, Business Improvement District. A, a, a hundred percent of whatever the taxes were would be, uh, spent in the district.
And where are you?
Eight, number eight, under section one.
Seventy-four, I need to, okay. Does, I mean, do you have any ideas as to that change?
I think the intent was on that one, because the BID is not contiguous. That if you promote tourism downtown, or any business downtown, you're promoting it for the entire area, even the businesses that aren't in the BID, because it's by parcel, it's not, it's not a contiguous area. So they just wanted to make sure that they were okay if tourism brings in, you know, because tourism is not, it's not as targeted as other things like flower, flower programs, or, or things that would go into additional businesses. I think honestly, you could take that out, and it wouldn't change the intent, so if you destruct "and surrounding areas" and approve the rest of it, I think that would be fine. There's another layer to this, is after, this is just what they are allowed to do, not necessarily what they're going to do. Obviously, the budget itself still has to be approved by the BID board, it would have to be in accordance with those rules, so. Uh, I think the intent was just to cover those, make sure they were covered for areas that were non-contiguous inside the BID, but if you would prefer just to strike that, and say, "We understand that," that there will be areas covered that are next to or inside of the BID, but not part of the BID, I think you could easily just strike "and surrounding areas" and, and go on with the rest of it.
Yeah, that would be fine, because, you know, that, that's, that's like a totally open-ended situation, where, uh, uh, the flower, flowers, for example, uh, that could be extended throughout the city. Uh, versus staying within the, uh, the BID, and, uh, well, anything like that could just, like I say, be open-ended, and, uh, that money is, is collected, those taxes are collected, uh, within that specific area, with the intention of them being spent within that specific area. Uh, and, uh, you know, uh, black and white statement at the, uh, the organizing of the BID, that, that was, uh, that was sort of written in concrete. And taking out the "and surrounding area" would be fine.
Alright, and anything else, since you have the floor right now, that you want to add?
No, no, that, that, that would be it, thank you.
Anyone else? I feel like I'm looking at a lot of different things.
Yeah, me too, um. But that doesn't restrict the L-Bid from placing things such as banners and stuff outside the district.
No, but they just wouldn't be financed by the BID.
Right.
Right, no, 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 that's, that's fine.
Unless the board wanted to expand, could they? Expand, say, the placement of the banners?
I would imagine they probably could, but that would be their decision.
As a map, yeah, as a map exists now, I mean, they, they do place banners and flower baskets outside the district as it is now, so.
I, I wouldn't want to put that
Because you don't want it.
As part-
Right, you don't want-
Of the bylaws.
Unexpected.
Right, I mean, they can make that decision, but, uh, at this point, they're basically, uh, the BID basically covers the downtown
Right.
business, um, area, and, uh, as long as it, the, the power to be able to approve expanding whatever,
Right.
uh, banners, or, or flowers, or whatever, uh, as long as the BID would retain um, the authority to do that.
Oh, okay.
Uh, that would be fine.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
Waiting, wait.
Quentin, anything else?
No.
For now?
No. That covers what, yeah, just clarify it on that, that's good for me.
Alright, um, Melissa?
Do we have a map? Is there a map that's easily accessible?
Um, I have one-
A lot, and I don't know where it is right now.
I have one at home, but-
I have one on email, I don't know if I could send it to Faith real quick. And I think it needs updated.
Melissa asked for it, and then we'll try find another.
Yeah, if you can pull it up.
Man, I looked at it earlier.
We've seen it multiple times.
I'm sorry, Drew, what?
We've all seen it before, multiple times, but just trying to find it right now.
And I have it at home on, on paper, I just didn't have it, bring it with me.
And that's, that's another one of the-
It's loud.
What's got it loud? That's another one of the issues that we're looking at as well, is making sure that GIS has the current That's another one of the issues that we're looking at as well, is making sure that GIS has the current parcels.
That's up to date, yeah.
Yeah, this is, this is an example of it, but I don't think this one, this is the one I was just talking with Stephen Jay about. I think there's some updates that need to be done to this one, but in general, that was what it looked like.
Yeah, this is the same thing that Patricia just brought up too.
Yeah, and so that one's not up to date completely. Like on that one, I don't think the gray bow shows in on that one. Not on that one. So, but in general, that's, I think that's, was the issue and why they put and surrounding areas was for areas where they're currently doing things. They want to make sure that they weren't restricted by the bylaws. But if the commission is comfortable with them doing current projects where things go slightly outside of the district, without that in the bylaws, I think we're fine. But I think that's what their concern was, that they weren't violating the bylaws by doing that, so.
Right, yeah.
Can I add another thing, Drill?
Please.
So I was reading, I was just reading some code for fun, some Montana code.
That's how you are.
About business improvement districts. I don't know how this fits in, but it talks about, because I'm not a lawyer that reads code for a job, but seven dash twelve dash eleven oh two. It has four points, and one of them is, serve a pub-, well, I'll just read them, serve a public use. Number two, promote the health, safety, prosperity, security, and general welfare of the inhabitants of the district and of the people of this state. Three, be of special benefit to the property within the boundaries of any district created pursuant to the provisions of this part, or for aid in tourism promotion and marketing within the district. So I didn't see anything, I, I didn't interpret the bylaws as contradicting that, especially since number two is like the district and beyond. But I'm not having strong feelings that I respect Warren's position that he was there from the beginning. I just want to make sure that it's consistent with the state code also, since the code talks about the district specifically, but the and beyond is implied in that one point. So that just stood out to me. And there's a whole bunch more on BIDs in the Montana code.
Anything else you want?
I mean, there's a lot, but I think that's the thing that's most relevant at this stage of a conversation.
Can you find anything on?
Oh, look at that.
Like the board, the decisions?
Faith.
Or budgets?
Faith might be faster than me. She's got it all up there. It's like just over halfway down is annual budget and work plan. I don't know if that's what you're, the eleven thirty-two. I haven't read every section of this code.
And the role of the board in, in the, in creating the bylaws and so just making sure that we're covering all those things here. What is their role?
So, and that's, that was one of the main things we added right there, number one. At a time determined by the governing body, the board shall submit to the governing body for approval of work plan and a budget for the ensuing fiscal year. That was the main thing we added to this one that was missing, so.
And we have never had a budget.
The BID has not provided it, no.
A budget or a-
Right, but as you can see, even if they voted to not do it, it's in state code that they have to. So this is, that's why we updated it, is because it's required by state code.
But we have never been presented one that I recall.
No, this was, this was one of the things that came up when we actually went through to review the BID in accordance with the, both the enabling legislation and the current legislation.
Well, I can't help but think, I'm sorry, actually, Melissa, you have the floor.
That's fine.
So we were talking about recommendations, right? So we had that earlier with a, just recommendations, making sure that everyone's comfortable with the recommendations of the board, or in the case of the planning board. And, and making sure we're on the right, you know, everyone's on the right track because it's another important entity. And the recommendation, I mean, this was signed, the board met in a regular, the scheduled meeting, or probably more than one meeting, to work on their bylaws and to update their bylaws. This was brought to us, to the city. You looked at it, Courtney, legally, in the legal eye, referenced Montana code, which is a pretty normal process. Then the board voted. And they, did they have an agenda and, and voted with an agenda?
I assume so. I don't go to the meeting, so I'm not sure. But I think they went through their standard process.
And they have, how many people on their board, do you guys know?
Is it seven? Is it five? Seven or five, I don't remember which.
It's in here somewhere, isn't it?
It is in here.
Yeah. Then they, as a board, chose to appoint, or to approve this as is, and then recommended it to us for approval, correct?
Yes, and it's seven, seven.
Seven, okay. I would like, have, like to have seen what the bylaws look like before because that's a normal thing that we do. So I can reference it again. I mean, we could go back to multiple agendas or try find it in. But it does help to see that slash-through kind of way or the additions, so we can make sure we're covering everything. So. Now, another thing, I guess I'm going to speak for, so I have had, and I'm sure others as well, have heard from community and business owners on this issue, including board members or just business owners themselves. And we have heard a variety of statements, but that all of them have been positive towards the process and where the whole, where we're at now with the LBD, LBID. And, and how, looking at the bylaws and looking at the process of the board itself in general, I should say. I have heard, Patricia, we got your letter, and I did hear from, or we did hear from you on, but I am going to say that you're the only one that I did hear in the negative of it, where I heard multiple people state to me in, in either emails or calls on how they feel things are going and that they are happy with the board and the board's improvements and the bylaws. So I just want to state that for the record. But I haven't heard a lot of negatives yet. Any other feedback from information or thoughts that you guys have on public comment on this, or people communicating? I feel like I'm the only one talking tonight, people.
No.
No, I've had the same situation that the, to a person, the, the response to these bylaws has been positive. Hundred percent.
I will agree with that as well. I mean, the feedback I got, yes. I didn't get Patricia's letter, so I don't know anything about that, but.
I thought the, some of the topics are, seem to be varying off topic of the bylaws to me. Like some of the talk about CBB, that's not really what we're voting on or talking about. So I've gotten feedback on that, but I thought I would just hold it since that's not what we're voting on. Yeah.
But positive feedback from the board, or the board's work.
Oh, yeah.
Should generalize it in that way, not so much VB, CBB related.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts on the bylaws? Any other corrections or things that people are concerned about?
Will this be like on the website, the city website, after everything? I know we've been working to update all of the things and get everything put on the website with the map and the bylaws. Will this end up housed somewhere?
So that's one of the things we're talking about is how we want to do it with organizations that aren't city organizations, like aren't boards, like the LBID isn't technically a city board, but it falls under city legislation. So we're either going to put it on the city webpage, or we're going to provide a link to the LBID's webpage so that there's, at least you can go to the city to find out about it and then get linked to their page if you want to do that. So we're, we're figuring exactly how we want that to work, but that's one of, one of the issues that we're working through as we do this.
That'd be great.
And like any board, they are required to submit this to the state, correct? Is that a norm, I mean, I-
Not for the BID. The BID just comes to the commission.
Okay, they don't have to have it like approved on the next level, which most boards?
Some, not, not all, but it just depends on how it goes. It depends on, usually that depends on whether or not they're getting money from the state. And since the LBID, the business improvement district, doesn't receive any state money, they don't have any reporting requirements to the state.
So we, we can recommend that they put it on their bylaws on their website?
And we're-
They really don't have anything referenced. They don't have the map.
And we may include all that on the city portion of the website. So we're, we're just working through the details. Do we want that hosted on the city and pointed to from their website? Or hosted on their website and pointed to from the city? It might be easier to do it on the city website since they're approved by the commission. So the official map that I can work with GIS to make sure that that's correct, and then we can post that on the city website. And then the BID just has to keep their germane information, and they don't have to worry about keeping track of the resolutions or the bylaws or that. We can make sure that we have a current copy, so we're not relying on, on the board to do it. We can do it ourselves.
That's what I'd like to see, yeah, absolutely.
When I, I recall that there was a map on our website at one point because you could find it. Right now, I can't find it, so I don't know where. But it'd be nice to see it back on there.
Might have been on the old website.
Yeah, maybe.
Might have gotten lost in the transition somewhere. But like I said, I think the maps we have probably need to be updated before we post them anyway.
Any other thoughts? Do we have a, a motion from the commission then?
I'll make a motion to approve action item B.
Second.
Changes notated by Mr. Maybe.
Second.
We have a motion by Schwartz and a second by Friedman. Roll call, please. Yes?
Four.
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 Four. Motion passes. Moving on to action item C. City attorney's legal opinion regarding planning board's inquiry. Is the planning board mandated by statute to run the growth policy process? Mr. Cardus.
I am going to make the assumption that you've read the memo, and I would just like to take questions so that I can start from, from where you are.
Courtney, could, yeah, that's what I'm actually going to ask her to.
Sure. And I can, and I can absolutely do that very simply. The question was posed was, was based on the growth policy statutes under seventy-six one. And the question posed was, was the planning board the agency which is supposed to basically control and run the growth policy process? And the short answer is no. They're designed to be working for you to assist you with the growth policy process. And when you're ready, if you decide to do that, you can task them with basically drafting, creating the policy as you direct that to happen.
So you're saying that the beginning stages or steps could be then used for the work they'll do in the future if, if wanted by the commission?
Correct.
So what we've done so far is a normal process to get to kind of the completed or the, the work they'll do.
Right, yes, Quinn.
So it's basically up to the commission to direct the planning board, you know, far as
Yes.
how we drive the growth policy, how much control we give to the planning board.
Yes, and, and if you go back to the purpose in the chapter, it's, the planning board shall serve in an advisory capacity to the boards and officials that exist. And, and that means largely you, because that's who they report to. And they basically serve at your pleasure. And the membership and the administration under seventy-six one three oh five and seventy-six one twenty-two, two twenty-one also basically give the commission the authority to appoint members and to, to make those things happen on the schedule directed by the city commission or the county commission in, in that case.
Thank you.
You bet.
Do we have any public comment on action item C? No, okay, sorry, started reading.
It's a good document, right?
Yes. Any commissioner comments?
I, Courtney, I know I brought this question to you, and Michael, I really, really appreciate your very thorough and clear explanation. It's very helpful for me, being the commissioner on the planning board who's been fielding this question for several months. Thank you. Yeah, you've certainly raised the bar for answering questions from the commission. This is, this is top-notch. Thank you. I really appreciate it.
Is that all?
No, yeah, I think it's great. It's very helpful and clear. And easier to read than code.
Yeah. Any other commissioner comments or questions?
I have one question. At, at one point, and I forgot what the origin is, but it seemed that there was, in the, in the process, the final document would go through the planning board for a review and then be, with, with any comments, be submitted to the commission. Is that right?
It's like I paid you. Um, this is, that's exactly what I wanted to address was, while the planning board hasn't been directed to create the growth policy and hasn't been directed to supervise that process, they will still have a large role in the process. And that's exactly what you're talking about is, is the main role for most planning boards in this is that they will get the, the product from, in this case, our consultant. And they will hold the public hearings on the growth policy with the public to get input on the draft product.
And then they will wrap that up with recommendations and then provide that to you as the commission. And then you will also hold public hearings on that growth policy as well. So there's still a lot to be done with it, and the planning board will have a larger role than any other board in the process. It's just their process is going to become, after the product is, the draft is produced, they will then go, they'll be in charge of going through that review process with the public of the draft, so.
Thank you.
I'm going to refer back to the history part. So we, history is very short-sighted sometimes, and we know that. People forget, if it doesn't impact them, then they're, they forget and then sort of have to come up with the reasons after. You know, we're at the end of a process or whatever. But I was on the, the planning board when we worked on the growth policy. It's all we did. The reason we stopped doing it is because it was ineffective. It was time- It was time a time consumer consuming thing that we had to, we knew we had to pass on to someone who are more people that were experts versus citizens working their tails off to try to create this important document. So then it went on a sort of hiatus. Then they worked on it again to just get it updated enough with a little bit of information. So we had a more current growth policy growth. Then the planning board brought the the idea of hiring an outside entity to work on it to the commission, to the community or, you know, et cetera. So they didn't want to take it on as their role or their job because it was too much. It's really too much. And having done it, it was really, really hard.
Yeah.
And we would spend, you know, hours and hours and hours outside of normal board meetings trying to work on one section, each person would, and it was daunting. So when I think of people being concerned about the role of the planning board and that they're not getting enough of a role, I think they're forgetting sometimes that they really did and it didn't work. And so having this front loaded, hard work that by having an outside organization gather the data, bring it into a place where then it can be all be considered with that information laid out to the board or with the planning board and the community and then to us is, I think, the only way to do it from experience. So when people are concerned, I go back to that. I really don't think that they remember the history and that it wasn't working the way it was done before. And so not that they didn't try, it was just almost impossible for the group. And so I like where it's going. I can't wait until the planning board has this because that's where it's really going to get to the what it needs to look like for our community based on feedback, their hard work, you know, public meetings. And by the time we get it, it should be like like a done deal almost. We don't have to, of course, that's our job. But I hope that people start seeing the the steps and and stop worrying about the role of the planning board and that they really, they will get this and they will do the hard work coming up. This will just make that step or process a little easier for them. That's my lecture.
Madam Chair.
Yes. Mel.
We're also getting surveys this time. We never had surveys before, did we? Surveys of general public, that's a huge.
Just open public meetings, right?
So that's a huge input. Okay.
Yeah, it's being professionally wrong too, which instead of guessing as we go along.
Any other public, I mean commissioner comments? Did I open this to public comment yet? Yes. Okay, I couldn't remember. Thank you. So we don't have any decision to make. That's just a little time. His screensaver threw me.
My daddy.
It's Andy Griffith. Couldn't help but be thrown by that. Next on our agenda, city manager comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Only a couple of quick updates tonight, both of them, I think, very positive. One is that we got actually got the official letter in the mail today from the Department of Commerce that we received a fifteen thousand dollar grant from the Commerce Department for the Main Street Montana program. That is right now earmarked to go towards updated downtown plan, downtown master plan. Fifteen thousand dollars probably won't cover that. So the next process will be figuring out where we get the rest of the funds to cover the rest of it. But this is our first grant application in the Main Street Montana program. And so it's very encouraging that one, we were accepted into the program and now we've actually been successful in applying for a grant through that program. So both, I think, great, great moves forward, great news for both the downtown and the entire city. So that that came in this week. Additionally, talking about surveys, you guys have set me up on everything. It's like you got a little tea. I don't know if you saw the update email today, but we have crossed over twelve hundred surveys collected, which, you know, which percentage wise is amazing. So that's wonderful. Does that include all the hand counted ones? Do we include that in the twelve hundred? Yeah. Yeah. So we don't have them all in yet. There's there's some difficulty getting the the handwritten surveys converted and into the system. But as a minimum, we have twelve hundred surveys, which when we started, I think our goal was to try and get seven hundred. So we had around ten percent. We've well exceeded that and well, well beyond what the contractor has ever seen in any other community as far as public engagement goes. So that combined with the, I think, fifty two people that attended our public meeting and one hundred and fifty four comments, one hundred and fifty four comments just from the webpage, I think we're getting a very good cross section of public engagement in the process. So there you go. There's your there's your good news for Tuesday.
Great, thank you. Melissa.
Is the webpage going to continue to be open for comments?
Yes.
Do you know how long it will be?
The webpage will be open through the entire process as far as I know. That's just going to be up there and available for the the comment page, not the survey itself. Although I did fail to mention, we are working on putting out a second survey, which will basically just consist of one question, and that's please define what you believe the character of Livingston is. Because a lot of the feedback we've been getting on the initial surveys is we'd like to preserve the character of Livingston. And so we'd like people to go through an exercise of actually defining what they think the character of of Livingston is. We've gotten a few few responses to that already. They're kind of fun to read. But we're going to try and reach out and do the same thing, see if we can get as many people as possible to think about that and then actually put down in writing what aspects of Livingston they think actually provide the character that they're they're looking to maintain.
I have another question and it's I heard Alexis speak a little bit at the Y B C C meeting just under a week ago, the energy intern, Ailston Ben, Citizen Council. Is she planning to come and share with the commission before her time is up? Do you know? Because she had some interesting things to say and I think it would benefit the other all of us to hear it.
I'm not sure she's going to have time before she leaves for the Navy, but yeah, she can go into, that's great. But Alexandra, I believe, is the next energy intern. They'd made the names as close as possible to make sure it was confusing. But we probably will bring her in for introductory, which we never managed with Alexis, and hopefully we can pass on some of that information because she's going to be taking over all the all of the projects that Alexis is currently working on.
That'd be great. There were some interesting topics about city commuters, like city staff and how they commute and versus county and wastewater treatment plant, energy use and just other topics that I think would benefit all of us to hear. The third thing I wanted to share with you guys was I went to Park High School this week and talked to the government class and a pre-law class. And high schoolers, it turns out, are very interested in roads. Wasn't expecting that. But but I guess it makes sense because they're all or many of them are new drivers. So now they're seeing the community from a different perspective. Lot more road questions than I've ever gotten in a year and a half. And like one day I was flabbergasted really with all the road commerce. Shannon should have been there, really. But it was fantastic and an excellent thing to do right after I saw the chamber choir within a week before that. It reminds me of how excellent the high school students are here in Livingston. They're doing great things. And it was fun and you should say yes if you ever get invited to Brian's class.
I have.
Yeah. It's pretty fun. If you especially if you like to talk about roads.
Yeah. They also skateboard on them a lot and ride their bikes. So they they know really what a road's like.
They were asking about speed limits and dips in roads and I was like, fascinating.
They were asking things like get rid of everything, like signs, you know, speed limits.
And the crossing, there was crossing talk, of course. Anytime you talk about roads, talk about trains, but yeah, thank you. I yield.
I just want to mention two, I think are going to wind up being very real important factors that have happened recently. And one is Livingston Healthcare purchasing a hundred acres adjacent to their current property. And the other, the H R D C receiving a one point one million dollar loan in terms of affecting possibly affecting housing in Livingston, which is really high up on the list of priorities. These two events could wind up being very important tipping points for that topic. Thank you.
You stole all my notes. I had I had the same thing. What what's left over, though, is the Fairfield Inn. That's a huge project. And I've said beforehand, this, when they come down from the expressway, instead of taking a left, they take a right, hopefully. And there's going to be a lot, a lot of things there, so that's good. I was with, I belong to a group and we we meet every couple of Wednesdays during the month, but I was with Michael McCormick and they're going to have a March fourth opening on the bakery downtown. I think that's what it's planned for. There's a lot of good stuff going on. Now we've got to figure out what to do about the Route ninety where all the accidents were over the weekend. Things happen so fast and it's, I was at a meeting with a group and one of the, in effect was Michael's wife was over in Bozeman coming back that night and the traffic was just backed up all over the place. So it's between the pass and that area there, we've got, it's quite a deal. And they can't react fast enough to get the thing settled. So I think in the future, that's something I really have to think about. I yield.
Pretty much took everything out, but yeah, great news for H R D C. I'm glad to see that and just make that project move along faster. And a shout out to the Park High Chamber Choir. That was an awesome concert. all I have.
Great. Well, thanks, like Michael said, setting me up or him up today to say what he had to say. My shout out is to the Chamber Choir Director. So so if you don't know Nancy Curtis, she's quite a force. She's a force in our musical music community here in Livingston. I also happen to work with her. But she goes above and beyond to create music, musical opportunities for kids that and students that are like out of this world. We're well respected. I know Mel always, every year, he's like, if you haven't heard the choir concert, he says it at some point a couple of times a year because they're that good. But it's because of her. And so my shout out is for Nancy Curtis and for a variety of reasons. And she volunteers in our community, not just in school, in the schools to help, you know, kind of push the program to a higher level. But she also volunteers at her church and she'll do musicals and she participates in musicals and she'll lead musicals and she's directed things. She is retiring this year after thirty something years. So I'm sorry to say for all everyone's bragging about how great that concert was and she won't be back next year because she's retired. Nope, she's retiring. I love her energy and her kindness and her commitment to students, her open minded, just love of people and and students. She also like her and I have one thing, I'm a huge believer in the arts and I'll say it often. And she and I always like relate to that and the importance. I am into the visual arts myself. She's into, you know, music and choral arts or all arts and related to music. And and the importance they have to our community is like almost unheard of. And she is one of the main driving forces behind it. And I want to congratulate her on being awesome as well as retiring. And she'll be getting to hang out a lot more, less students.
I forgot one thing. My wife and I belong to the Community Choir. And we're kicking off a spring thing on February twenty fourth at seven o'clock at Holbrook.
Yes, we heard that just the other day. At the listening session, we had someone talking about that. So there's there's they're starting a spring.
Saying that or what?
Yeah.
But it used to be like just the holiday kind of concert. And now they're moving it to another level to have a spring
Right.
Concert as well. So that is all I have tonight.
Can I just back in one more shout out to Emily Raymond? He's a P E teacher, teacher of the earth through the special ed program. It was on the cover of today's paper, but she's a neighbor and great person.
She's a P E teacher.
Got P E.
Oh, I thought you said special ed.
No, no, no.
You did say.
Special Ed of Montana.
Oh, okay.
Teacher of the year of that group.
She's awesome, too. Yes. That you guys took from the schools. Yeah. No bitterness. anyway, on that note, on that positive note, do I have a motion from the commission for adjournment?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? This meeting of the Livingston City Commission is adjourned at seven oh two. One. Seven oh one.